All right, it is six o'clock. We'll get started with our regular commission meeting this month, and we'll have a call to order, and you'd like to do the prayer for us.
It don't matter.
And Ms. Willie, you want to do the pledge, please?
Let's pray. Our Father which art in heaven, we thank you for this day. Dear my Father, as we go through this meeting, I pray that you would give us the guidance and the direction that we can lead Mount Pleasant forward and do the best for our citizens. And pray that you will bless our nation and the country, dear my Father, for I ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank y'all. Call to order, please, ma'am.
Do what?
Here. Roll call, I mean.
Jacqueline Granberg here.
Mike Davis.
Here.
Eric Harvey, absent. And Willie Alrison.
Here.
Four present.
All right, we have a court. Number four, approval of corrections. We have three sets of minutes here. One is from our budget workshop of the 11th, the study session of the 12th, and then the regular meeting of the 17th. And after y'all have had a chance to read them, I will entertain a motion.
Do we have to do A by itself, or do A, B, and C?
You can do all three together, yeah. Yeah. Just say in your motion that you're approving all.
I'll make a motion to approve A, B, and C as presented, the annual budget and tax rate, the study session, and the regular meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, awards, presentations, appointments. First we have is a mayor's appointment of Board of Zoning Appeals, and Pam's with us tonight. And I asked Pam to serve. Pam's and her husband are become a big part of our community, and thank you for doing that.
And Mayor, I was asked to kind of clarify the terms. This is filling your father's, obviously.
That's right.
And it is good till September of this year, so we'll have to reappoint in September of this year.
Okay.
And then just heads up on the next, these are three-year terms. She's just filling in for another term, and then the Industrial Development Board that you're going to talk about next is six-year terms, and they're all expired, so they'll all be six-year terms.
Okay. Let's do these. We need a motion to accept, Pam.
I'm the first one, yes.
I'll make a motion that we'll send Ms. Pam to the Board of Zoning Appeals and Industrial.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a number of them. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. IDB, would you read out, please, who we've got?
So it's Jeff Teigen, Jergen Allman, and Derek Church, and they're all six-year terms.
Okay.
And we've talked to all of them.
Any questions on those? They've been there, or they're just staying?
We just, it's a very inactive board, but when we need them, we need them, so we just, we keep it active.
Yes. Any questions about any of those folks? Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to accept the IDB board.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Six. Completion of a review and unfinished business ordinance, ordinance 2022-1095. This is a public hearing and the final reading on ordinance 2021-1075 said ordinance appropriating revenues and expenses of operating the city of Mount Pleasant department mental functions for the year beginning July the 1st, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022, providing an effective date.
Now, Mayor and Commissioners, this ordinance essentially closes out our books for this year, June 30th, 2022. You all should have a single sheet budget amendment bullet point list that outlines all of the changes that Loretta has made between first reading and second reading. Happy to answer any questions or list this off, but you should all have that in front of you. Number nine, it says HMPG. That's all FEMA and TEMA related work. I'm not, I don't even know what that acronym stands for, but that's what that is. So you know, Shouse is who our consultant is for FEMA and TEMA projects. But anything else you have a question on, we're happy to address, and then this will close out our books. And while I'm talking about that, we will close at 3:00 on June 30th, so that we can stop business and close our books out right before we have a special call meeting. But we will send out a note and get on social media. We do it every year, and we will close on that Thursday at 3:00.
All right.
Like you said, Mayor, it is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. If anyone cares to speak on this, please come forward. Please let the minutes reflect. No one wanted to? No entertain a motion to approve this ordinance. Again, all this is doing, closing out this year's.
I make a motion to accept ordinance 2022-1095 as presented.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, ordinance 2022-1096. Again, this is a public hearing and a final reading, an ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the year beginning 2022 and ending June 30th of 2023, and that's going to be done on the 30th.
Yes. So, Mayor, what I'm recommending is someone make a motion to continue this meeting till June 30th, where we'll take up the budget and about four other items below that are related to it. I have out front and here, and if you all should have received an email with the special call meeting agenda. And so all those things on here will be things that we, since they're budget-related, we will continue till June 30th. So basically, this meeting stays open, and it's the same meeting when we reconvene on June 30th.
So at the end, Cory, we don't want to adjourn. We want to suspend, or how do we want to word that?
We are continuing the meeting.
Continuing.
To determine the items on the special call meeting agenda.
The minutes will be one set of minutes for it. And that's to make sure that our notice is good. It was in the paper today. It'll be in two papers tomorrow. But also, this meeting here tonight was noticed in the paper, and we just want to make sure we've done everything to get the notice out to everybody in the community about these meetings. Anything I've missed on that?
We went over and over the notice. It's probably overkill, but it is, out of abundance of caution, put it in two papers, published it twice, and that gives all of you a chance to be here at the next meeting.
Yes.
That's great.
Mike, wait. If we would go any further, go back to ordinance 2022-1095. I know before, when we made a motion on this, we also have to have amended. Does that matter on this one?
To do what?
You know, it says in ordinance to amend ordinance 2021-1075. I'm just saying to be, you know, I know before we've had to go back and do that.
So that's your final, that's your budget amendment for this year?
Right. But I mean, we just made a motion for the ordinance. I mean, before, you know, we've done some things where we had to say we amend.
We got, we got amended on that.
This is brand new.
It is amended.
Okay, okay, okay.
And then you have a list of everything that.
Yeah, we'll answer that.
Oh, okay.
It should be fine.
Yeah.
It says amend. I remember that's what I'm saying before we had to say.
Okay.
That budget hasn't been set yet.
No.
So you're not, you'll amend it probably twice next year.
Oh, you're talking about the new one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, B is not amended. B is what.
No, I'm talking about A. Let's go back to A.
All right. Everybody square on that? So B will not be heard tonight. It will be heard on the 30th, at 5:00 p.m.
Can y'all, 5:00 p.m.?
Vote to do that.
Yeah.
I make a.
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion to continue the meeting to 6:30.
Well, do we need to have a public hearing on this?
You'll have to have a public.
You'll have, you can have it now, but you will have a public hearing on.
The 30th.
The 30th.
Okay, that's what we'll do.
Has anybody signed up to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. We can.
Yeah, we'll hear it now. If that's what you're signed up, because I, I'm sorry, I cannot.
Doug.
I got Doug.
See him.
Okay, cool.
Doug Sims, 110 North High Street. And mine is on the second B. And with my understanding from what I can read off of social media, that at the present time, it looks like y'all are talking about a 30% increase in taxes, and Murray County's talking about about a 20%. And I just want y'all folks to realize that that's a 50% for people. I mean, times are hard, and I want people to realize that. And I realize things is going up and everything, but we need to be sort of thinking about the people that's living in the community, too. And a 50% increase is going to be hard to swallow for a lot of people. Y'all just need to keep that in mind. We are.
I try to get them to go $1.50, but they say we can't do it, so.
Yeah.
So what's proposed would match your assessment, your reassessment? So if your reassessment is 30% higher than it was, then your taxes would be about 30% higher. If your assessment was 10% higher, it'd be 10%. If it was 50, it's matching the evaluation of your property. And we looked at a $200 piece of property with.
$200,000.
$200,000, I'm sorry. And the difference was $203.45.
That's just the city of Mount Pleasant, though.
Right.
That's great.
That's all we can control.
Murray County is also going up.
Right.
That's great.
And that's why I'm saying, I'm looking at overall.
Right.
I'm looking at a 50% increase in taxes.
Right.
This coming year.
Mm-hmm.
And like I said, that's sort of, that's getting a little unreasonable when you throw that all on your constituencies at one time. I think you should really look at a lesser amount, and hopefully Murray will, too. But who can say?
I can, I'll say this. I'm not going to disagree with you totally. The reassessment is nothing that the city of Mount Pleasant can control.
I agree.
Period. And what we are doing is leaving our tax rate exactly as it is. We're not going up. It's the reassessment that is causing the increase.
Right.
So that's my only point that I want to make sure everybody understands. Our city is continuing to run as absolutely efficiently as we can. We're, and I'll just give you an example. The sewer project, we thought we had $8 million, had it all squared away to get it done, came in at 15.3. That's a whole lot of money for a city this size to try to find. But let me tell you what a lot of folks sitting around this table did. Of that increase, we got $5.5 million of it granted to us with no matching funds. So the overall, it's, we're going to be in a lot better shape. We're going to put something to bed that's been bothering this city since the 80s.
In any case, the end result is our taxes are going up and.
Yes, sir. And I'm not, I told you, I'm not going to disagree with you.
Everybody here, all of our taxes are going up, too.
Yeah, everybody.
I just have to make one, just clarification. So our, the tax rate for Mount Pleasant will stay the same as it was last year.
That's great.
But because this is a reappraisal year.
Right.
That's right.
The certified tax rate is supposed to equalize the reappraisal going up.
Keep it neutral.
So even though the tax rate is the same as it was last year, and the budget's essentially, you know, similar, this is a tax increase. I want that to be clear. We are fixing the tax rate.
Thank you.
I'm not, I didn't, I said it was. I'm not disagreeing with it. It's just because of, but it's just a reassessment year, and property values are substantially increasing.
Yeah.
But I'd hate to say we'll no buy some.
Can't bind it.
I still like to go buy some.
All right. So do we have a motion to?
Got a motion. We need a second.
Ms. Willie made a motion.
Ms. Willie Davis, a motion. Just trying to make sure we do this right, folks.
Can we start over?
Yeah, well, we've got your motion. We just need a second. And all we're doing is moving this, we're continuing this item to June 30th.
We should get along, Karen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second. We've got a second, a couple of them, it sounds like. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And thank you.
Appreciate it, Doug.
All right. C, ordinance 2022-1097. Again, this is a public hearing and a final reading as well. An ordinance to convert South Walnut Street into a one-way street in the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, and describe more accurately within the body of its ordinance. Personally, I thought it already was.
Right. Mayor and Commissioners, this is making Walnut Street a one-way, basically, South Walnut, sorry, going from First Avenue back to Locust, and probably long overdue. And then there are some townhouses going in on Locust, and that'll help their ingress and egress, too, that's in front of the planning commission.
Good.
And this is recommended by MTS. I think you all have the report attached.
Can I ask you a question? I guess as we go along, you know, I guess we have homes going up or whatever. And once we allow townhomes or duplexes or whatever, and another project comes up three or four months down the road, and we say, no, only single homes here, can that happen? Or is that, are you saying I'm giving these people?
Are you talking about the one-way street?
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm talking about, it has a, it has a townhome on it. I'm just saying, you know, down the road, when we have other builders come in and build homes, and I guess they want to put townhomes on it, and we say, no, hold up. We, we don't want to get too big here. We just want single-family homes.
Cory, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we'd bring out that orange piece of paper with the findings of fact, and you decide whether or not the land use meets our, our land use guidelines. Always going to be those four findings of fact. And if, and if you feel like it doesn't meet those findings of fact, you would decline it.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
If you feel like it does.
I'm just saying, anytime you're allowed on one, you don't have to allow it on the other.
So it's a case, case by case.
It's not about, according to the paper, Mr. Davis, it's not about actually allowing one or the other. It depends on the location in the area and how much it's going to affect the area. On what, like, right through there where they're putting that originally, they were talking about putting a street through there in order for them townhomes. But the lot was rezoned R3 at the builder's request for the townhomes, and the location is a good location for them, right at that lot.
Can I ask what we're talking about?
I'm just, I'm just.
Locust Street, Cole Newton's townhomes that you've seen at the planning commission that were approved.
They're between Locust and Walnut.
It's a one-way street, but they're putting townhomes on it.
Oh, okay. They're already being through the planning.
Yeah, it's done, but I'm just saying, you know, down the road, there's some more property that comes up.
So this is a general question, not related to one of the details.
Right, it's just a general question.
The thing that, you know, everybody's kind of answered it in pieces, but each time y'all do a rezone, which is what those are, right? Each one is a rezone. You look at each property and the surrounding area, and you decide, is it in agreement with the land use plan? Does it impact, you know, the people around it negatively? Have the circumstances changed? So we have to look at them, you know, individually. We get in a predicament, Commissioner Davis, if we have two that are like exactly the same, and we treat one differently.
That's what I was talking about.
But if they're, if there's something different about one property, if there's distinguishing factors, different facts, then you can treat different facts differently. You just can't treat the exact same fact differently.
Correct.
I don't think you have a motion yet on.
We don't, because I've not given the public an opportunity to.
Okay. All right, it's a public hearing. You're right. Thanks.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anybody care to speak on this? Please let the minutes reflect. No one did. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we change ordinance 2022-1097 to a one-way street for public safety because of the narrow of the street and the condition of the street.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
You have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, monthly report for mayor, and I have got just one thing, is I'd like to thank everybody that, that helped out Saturday at Gardenia. I spent a big part of the day up there in Bedford. Y'all did a great job. Ms. Jackie, just really thank y'all for being there. It was, it was a good day, it was a little warm, but it was cooler.
Mike came back.
You did come back. I probably looked before you got there.
It's our first, and I think we're going to just, it's going to grow from there.
Yeah, I think so. So just, I just want to thank everybody for the time that they took to make that happen, and I just appreciate it. Monthly financial and budget report.
Yes, I think you all should have gotten received last night your monthly report. Of course, we're closing out the year, and as Kate mentioned, we will be closing the office on June 30th at 3:00 p.m. to allow us to close out all the books and close out the receipts at the end of the year, so that it's kind of between close, you're imposing. The staff will still be here working, but we will actually close the office to, to the public that day.
Just for the, the 3:00?
Yeah, just at 3:00.
Right.
Afternoon.
All right. Anything else for Loretta? You none entertain a motion?
Motion approved the monthly financial budget report as presented.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from City Manager.
Just briefly, want to reiterate exactly what the mayor said about Juneteenth. I apologize, I had to be with family on that day, but it sounds like y'all did a great job. If any of you driven by the splash pad, I dare you to tell me there wasn't somebody there when you drove by, because it's just been packed, and it's really doing well. I know it's been a hard, hard project over many, many years, but it's very successful right now. And then just want to let you know, I'm still working on the county American Rescue Plan money. The initial numbers the county had were wrong. I was back at the meeting last night. They moved, they continued it to the July budget meeting, but we're going to get some money out of it, and I'll just keep going to the meetings, and at some point, hopefully, the July meeting can tell you exactly how much money that we're going to get out of that. But we're going to get 30% of the money, however that lands.
And just to tell y'all what else Kate's been doing. I came by yesterday, and Kate and Loretta were here working. Kate was on a conference call with the folks from that group that I had met previously.
State.
She was here yesterday on her day off, on a conference call about it. So, thank you, Kate. All right, we don't need anything on that. Any other questions for Kate?
Kate, I'd just like to mention Vernon Johnson.
Sure.
If you would, you know, speak on it.
Yeah, we had an incident where he had a couple, a couple children and an adult locked in a bathroom, and we were kind of up against it. And Vernon Johnson, who lives on Gardenia, came to our aid very quickly with a crowbar to be able to get everybody out of the bathroom. And we're going to make sure that we don't have bathrooms that you can get yourself locked into and have like a bar that you can slide over to get in and out of the bathroom to make sure that doesn't happen again. But at the very last minute, on a very warm day, he, I sent him a text saying that you were our hero and you rescued us, so that worked out great.
Somebody hooked the locks up reverse?
Somehow. We don't know. But it did happen. There was a mom and two children locked in the bathroom on a very hot day.
That's a horse.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Willie.
Yeah. Waste Water Liaison Report.
Mayor and Commissioners, I think I mentioned it, the study session, the very first thing on there is the sewer trunk line rehabilitation. You can still see some equipment out there, but we are basically finished. They've got to clean up what they have still there, and that project will be closed out. Rainy Street has been approved to bid. All they needed was that last note from you about the fence and the floodplain that Cory provided to him last week. So that will be bid out soon. Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvements, obviously, that's already been bid, and we've, the notice to proceed was issued May 29th, and you should start seeing construction around mid-July, so that's going to be moving forward. That's obviously the largest of all of these projects with the sewer. And then the Influent Pump Station, we're closing that out, and that, I'm imagining by the July meeting, that that'll be closed out. So you're, we almost have two of the four completed, even though the biggest one is the Treatment Plant Improvements.
Correct. Any questions for Kate? Gas?
No report there. Everything is going fine.
I noticed we probably got our last big bill. On gas.
I don't know why you think it's the last.
Last for this year.
For this year.
Yes, yeah. No, for this fiscal year, yeah.
Yeah, I just paid it till Friday.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
It's crazy. We don't need a motion on either of those, too.
Yeah.
Number 11, new business. Resolution 2022-17, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for nonprofit organization Mount Pleasant Murray Museum of Local History.
Mayor and Commissioners, these, the next three, 17, 18, and 19, are all the nonprofits that are in our budget, and we're asking they all be continued to the June 30th special call meeting, because they do impact the budget.
Okay, so A, B, and C will be continued?
Yes.
Okay.
We need a motion for each.
What about, you want to do a D and E together?
Do what?
D and E.
B is not impacted. There's no financial.
Yeah. Sanitation fund.
Yeah.
D is the employee compensation plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. B, there's the.
Well, let's just do A, B, and C, and then we'll move through the rest of it. How's that, Cory?
Anything that's in the budget.
Okay, sorry.
A, B, and C can be done.
I'll make a motion that we continue A, B, and C of 2022-17, 2022-18, 2022-19, until the 30th.
Perfect.
Perfect. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2022-20, resolution revising the employee compensation plan for the city of Mount Pleasant.
So Mayor and Commissioners, this is the compensation plan. It doesn't impact the budget. You have to fund it for it to be impacted. And you see, you have in front of you the three things that were changed. We increased the top-out pay for water, sewer, and gas employees that get licenses, can get paid for that. The police lieutenant detective position, and added a procurement and purchasing position, that is, that is not in the budget, but it's in the compensation plan.
First two are, but the third, the procurement is not, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that's why you'll be voting on whether or not you want them in the budget when you vote on the budget.
Correct.
And the compensation plan does not involve money.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Kate? You none entertain a motion?
Motion approved, resolution 2022-20 presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. E needs to be continued, correct?
E and F and G. So I don't know if you want to read them off, Mayor, but all three of those. And then the only other thing that we voted on tonight is H.
Well, let's just make sure everybody, because that sanitation, we're moving it to general. Everybody's good with that, correct? Resolution, just employee handbook.
And we changed longevity there, so it doesn't involve money. That's why it's being continued.
Correct. And then the bid on, bid award on Falls Creek, and I know y'all are still working with the contractor on that.
Yes. Today, they recommended we go ahead and award the bid, and they think they can make up the difference. But we don't want to lose the low bid that we have, and so that'll be voted on by you, June 30th.
Sanitation funds has nothing to do with the, I guess, the trash, the 1750 a month for trash.
Yeah, there's been no change there.
I'll make a motion that we.
All three of those are on the agenda that's going to be published tomorrow, right?
Yeah, and I have it here for everybody to see. This is the special call meeting agenda, and I'll make sure you leave with copies, but all three of them are on that agenda.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we continue 2021, 2022-21, 2022-22, and G until the 30th.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. H, approval of change order for influence screening.
And this, Mayor and Commissioners, this was a project I just talked about that is about complete. There is a change order in the amount of $24,357.71, where we had to do excessive pumping during the rain season. Also, the fact that S&amp;P Liner that did the pump line project was running behind, and so that caused part of the problem. So we will recoup some of that $24,000 when we do liquidated damages on S&amp;P Liner. But right now, for the mayor to sign off on the change order, need a motion and a second and a vote on that.
Any questions on that? I think we're all, Kate keeps us pretty aware of what's going on with all the updates related to that. You none entertain a motion?
I don't think we'll get back, though.
Um, they thought half. Matthew Johnson thought half, just off the top of his head.
Okay, right.
Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve of change of the influence screening improvement.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I thank you. I think as the big project goes through, we'll have more change orders, but so far, that's been very few change orders.
So far, so good, really, on this project. So far, so good, really, on this project that size. All right, we had had Mr. Sims sign up to speak, and he's already spoke, so that's all we had sign up. Ms. Jackie, anything?
No, I appreciate everything during my absence. Sorry, I was, I was out of my control. We're proud, desperate, and I bet you all out there of my beauty park and the success that we had up there. It was pretty good turnout. I've done a lot of confidence by it, so I think we'll be doing more things.
Aye.
I just think that we got to go to $1.69 Friday. That's it. Don't move.
Ms. Willie?
I'm just going to thank Bedford for all his hard work, for our Juneteenth event, and all those that helped him. I really appreciate it. We had a good time up there, and like Kate said, it was a learning lesson for us this year. But next year, we're going out with a bang.
Learned something. Remember when we started the car shows, we learned a whole lot.
I just want to thank Bedford, and I appreciate all of you.
Yeah, we did one last weekend. Along with what we did, we wanted to try it, and I think it worked out well. We wanted to try it matching it with the music.
Okay.
And the sands home is perfect for that because of that big white cherry street.
Okay.
And had, I'd say there were over 300 people there, 300 people there.
My only disappointment is I didn't get any food.
Yeah.
They were sold out.
Sold out.
Okay, I missed that. Yeah, because I know we hadn't had something, asked you about.
Yeah, and it worked out. Matter of fact, card from one of the guys that was there saying thank you.
Don't forget to set the special meeting and to continue.
It was my next minute, because I wrote it, I wrote down exactly what you told me to say.
I saw all y'all packing your stuff away.
I'm not going to let them get out of it without it. All right. I would accept a motion to continue this meeting to June 30th at 5:00 p.m.
I second.
I second. I make a motion to continue the meeting to June 30th.
We have a motion, we need a second.
And we got a bunch of seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.